Good evening. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, being held in the Selectmen's office this evening, March 4th, 2024. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conference technology. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting other than ourselves?
And Kristen.
Kristen, are you out there? Yes, Kristen Rivers from the Hampton Wolverham times. First of all, I'd like to welcome Brian Domina to our first meeting as our Newtown Administrator. And I'm sure he'll enjoy the proceedings every Monday night. First item on the agenda is the minutes. That's it. That's all you got. That's all you get.
You told me to lie my first meeting, dude.
Did you want to mention we don't actually don't have a Zoom recording of last week?
Yes.
Or maybe just if anyone's looking for that, yeah.
All right, minutes, March 4th, 2024. And was there, there was an issue with the Zoom last week, right?
I put a note on the bottom of the minutes, actually.
Okay, all right. Flies the minutes, Senior Silver Billing Committee was in to talk about the forum. State Representative Brian Ashton, Senator Oliver were here to give Bob an award. We voted on some one day permits for the event to be held at Great Horse. Let's see, Town Administrator was introduced. We did the emergency management plan. Fire Department was here to, we appointed two new reserve firefighters. I guess term of call firefighters. And that's about it.
At one point in the Zoom operator, he did reach out to John Provost as well, and he's putting it out in the school. Also, on the executive session thing, Lauren, it's executive session without returning to open session.
Most of those from March 4th.
With those changes, sir.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
First item we have on the agenda this evening is the Fire Department again, a junior firefighter program.
Shall we make this a permanent 605 appointment with the Fire Department? I'd like us to do that. I'd like that.
I think so. Stand like a standard.
I have to apologize. I thought the information was passed out to you. So Nick, our career lieutenant next to me, he has had the experience of going through a junior firefighter program at Shaker Pines. He, when he started, he mentioned something to me. We've talked about this in the past for the Fire Department. We never really took a step forward with it. So I had a call from a neighboring town asking what age we accepted firefighters. I said 18. They said, geez, that's too bad. We have someone from your town that's joined our Fire Department, and they were under the age of 18. So that really made me pay attention at that point, so we need to do something. So Nick, like I said, has reached out. He's gotten all this program paperwork for you, pretty much laying out the pretty well detailed outline of it. I don't expect a decision tonight, but your thoughts would be great.
So it's clear they're not frontline. They're support staff.
Yes, so they would just support us. They can't go into any.
Aggressive situations.
Yeah, they can't go into any wildfires. They can't go into any.
Yeah, they could do sort of like a exterior firefighter, maybe help with outside stuff, set up our water supply.
And as you said, that frees up a lot of person to go to the frontline.
The only wildfire they'll save per the post on stuff they could do is like a brush fire.
If I'm not mistaken, when we had the fire in Minotaur Mountain, was there cadets from other towns there helping? Do I remember correct?
I think, believe months, the town of Monson did have some.
Because I remember seeing a bunch of younger.
Yeah, so that's one exception to it. If it is a mutually aid, they don't go to mutually aid unless it's a manpower call or brush fires.
Oh, hey there. Thank you so much.
Well, what, what, okay, so liability?
So we did reach out to the town, spoke to insurance company about it. And they said, as long as it's not, they're not, you know, line item situation, you know, the age of 16, they would. But I, I mean, I strongly think that if you do agree to go down this path, it should go maybe to Town Council wording wise. Again, check with the insurance company. This is just us presenting something that we think would be benefit. If you read it, it says, you know, high school kids have to maintain a certain grade average in school, you know? But it gives the opportunity to someone, not only if they want to make this a career, but gives them another path to, for some of their energy or something to steer them hopefully in a better direction.
And as you said, we're not totally new around here. This is something that works in other communities. So we have plenty of other communities to draw on for experience.
Yeah.
Summers does. Actually, pretty much every town has a volunteer combination department that borders Hampton has on Summers, Monson, Stafford.
Shaker Pines.
Where I started at Enfield, Shaker Pines.
We do go back to what the question was about insurance, though. So even though they're not frontline, they're back up a truck, they're helping hook up a hose. If they get hurt, who's covering that?
What would be like any, any other town employee at that point?
Are they a town employee? Are they being paid?
They would be covered under the insurance.
Okay, are they being paid?
Well, that's something, you know, I would think that they would be paid a minimum wage. I don't know. Were you paid as an expert?
It's a straight internship, you think? Or you think you would?
How it worked, and I know other communities, stuff like that, would be, they do like a probationary member as for a permit, so the minimum wage for a call. The chief decides to do that. That's pretty much that.
So they, yeah, so they'd be a probationary until the age of 18. And then if they met all their training requirements, then we could accept them as a member at that age. So it'd be like their two year probationary period if they joined at 16. I understand a lot of them obviously can't drive at 16 years old. So they'd be depending on their parents or something to bring them to training. Can I get a ride to the fire?
Riding their bike.
That'd be good. That's good optics.
That's what I did. Well, we're just trying to come up with creative ways and, and something that would, you know, also help somebody out, you know, that's looking to get into this.
I think any opportunity for people to have, to be of service is a good, a good way to do it. As long as the town's protected and the Fire Department's protected, I think it's a valid thing. Like Nick said, he's a product of it. Other towns do it. They see success with it.
You get longevity out of it. If they want to do it as a career, you still have them for the next, whatever years till they get a job somewhere else or go into a local school like Western New England, Springfield College. If they go to college locally, now you're getting a whole nother four years of someone that.
It's also the opportunity to train them at a younger age. So when they get to, you know, 18 or whatever, they're up to speed already. So you're investing in them at an early age.
We just had five downwind, a call member in Enfield go through their fire one. All of them passed the first shot. So it just shows it.
I think exactly what Craig said. That probation, if somebody came in at 18, they would have to start probation. This way, they hit 18, they've already got that out of the way, and they can be an effective member at the beginning.
You're, you're training them the habits you want them to have, not the learned habits down the road. So it's, it's, I think it's a good idea, you know? Only thing is, my son can't join because he's only six.
Yes.
So a little disappointed there, but.
Few years.
You know, when you went into the kindergarten class this year, he totally took to the firefighting program, so.
Keep him hooked.
He runs around the house wearing the overalls. I think it's a great idea. I think, obviously, you'll have to go through a little bit of the verbiage and read it through and have Town Council read it, so, you know.
So are you looking for a statement of endorsement from the board to go forward and explore it?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Well, in favor?
Thank you.
Falls in your court, guys.
Five minutes. We'll see you next week at 605.
We'll be talking to you, Brian.
As we raise the board, shall we begin to discuss who we met before?
I haven't met.
I'm so sorry.
Nice to meet you.
Ed Polanski, Fire Chief. Nick, you've probably seen Nick, founder of the dead.
Scalen and Associates.
Give us the bad news.
And the accountant.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Cliff?
Oops, you're doing that. Cliff, thank you. You made some great points this morning in the meeting.
Thank you. The more I make up, the better I sound.
So my name's Jeff Jandron. I was the audit manager for the, the past audit, the FY '23 audit, which is what we're here to discuss today. Here's the audit report. So the objective of an audit is give an opinion on the financial statements included in here. And they're the town's financial statements. You know, we come in, we get Cliff's records, the town accountant's records, and we get them, and now kind of more in the electronic age. We're getting them even before we show up in Town Hall. So you see us here a little bit less, but we might be doing the same amount or even more work. So we've got questions for Cliff before we even seen him. So when he shows right up, it's not, you know, oh, give us all your stuff. It's more, hey, what'd you do with this? And, you know, we're right on him right away as he can attest. So, and I can go into this, you know, I say I was only given 10 minutes, but with their five minutes, I figure that's 15. So, and Cliff will tell you, it takes me about 10 minutes just to say, how's the weather outside? So I'll, I'll do my best to keep it to how you guys want. You know, we base our audit on, we take a risk-based approach, and we concentrate on, you know, what are your largest assets the town has? What's, you know, and that's mostly, we concentrate on the collector's office. That's collecting all your real estate, personal property every year. And the treasurer's office, who's getting your money from the state, taking the money from the collector's office, put it in the banks, investing it and all that. So we concentrate there. The assessor's office, too, that's coming up with the budget module. You know, we, we give them internal control questionnaires, which goes over the procedures and policies that they're doing. And they answer that typically before we come out. And we want to see what are their answers? We'll test kind of what they say they're doing. Are they actually doing that? So, and then we're looking to see if they're following best practices, you know? And sometimes it'll just be minor things we could recommend, you know, improvement. As we go along, we'll talk to staff about them. So like I said, if we get into the, there's two reports here. The big one is 62 pages, you know? And I don't expect you to read the whole thing unless you're really bored. But a couple of things, you don't have to necessarily, you know, go to these parts. But the, the main thing is, on page three is the opinion. And as we said, that's the object of the audit, is to give an opinion. So the opinion is an unqualified opinion, which means we didn't find any, anything in the financials that were materially needed to be altered or changed. So that's kind of like, Tom likes to call it the gold standard opinion. So it's the highest opinion you can get. And then just to focus a little bit on the report, so page 15 and 16 are the entity-wide statements. And those are kind of like, like a business would run. So you have long-term assets, which is the capital assets, long-term liabilities, or anywhere where it says non-current, basically, like OPEB liability, net pension liability, compensated absences, which is what you have to pay out people when they retire, maybe 10, 15 years ago. But what is that amount right now, you know? You know, do you have to focus on funding for that because that amount is so large? You guys are not that big because you really only have, I think, mostly the police and highway are the employees that are going to get those payouts.
We're fortunate that because the school is part of the regional part, otherwise. We do have some older ones, prior to merger, things still left. But through whichever, you know, back when the school was strictly a hand in school, there might be a couple left, but that number is dropping.
So then, the next two pages after that are just the governmental, which is more or less what you guys care about year to year, your current-based statements, you know? And I'm not going to go over these in great detail unless anyone had any questions. And like I said, you know, you can ask questions today or you can ask questions later to me or Tom. We'll be happy to get back to you, whether, you know, ask Lauren to contact us or Cliff or whoever. And then the only other page I would really recommend is page 21, which is the budget versus actual non-GAAP. And I was going to stop there and go over just your reserves. So this year, your free cash was $900,000 approximately. And your stabilization was 1.1 million. So that gives you, you know, reserves of about $2 million. And on this page 21, you can see your budget for the year, which is under the expenditures, original budget, close to your revenues because your budget's more or less balanced, is going to be right around 15 million. So you've got 2 million in reserves, 15 million in a budget. So that basically you have about 13%, almost 14% in reserves. Going back to like I was here two years ago, I looked just to do a little check. I didn't want the same presentation, but certain things I grabbed. It was around 16%. So you're in the same ballpark. You know, I know Tom likes to say when he deals with the bonding agencies, places like that, anything over 10% is excellent. So you guys are right on that cusp of 14%. So you have a little bit of wiggle room above what's excellent at this point. So that's, that's good. That tells you, you know, your financial policies and procedures are working. You have reserves in place. You haven't had to dip into the stabilization, you know, too much. And then that was the, the next thing I was just talking about is how you got your free cash this year. So we said, okay. On the page 21 still, we'll just kind of remain there. But you generated, at the end of the year, you had $900,000 in free cash. Prior year, you had $700,000. You voted it all. I want to say $450,000 was to stabilization. So that's good. So that's almost voting it from your free cash. Basically, that's increasing your reserves overall. And the rest you had, I think it was for $225,000. I think it was the health insurance was a big jump. It went up. It seemed like it was almost, from Scantic Valley, went up like maybe 10 to 20,000 a month.
Well, we changed, we changed the percentage that we pay employees.
Oh, okay.
We changed it from 50 to 75.
We wrote to 75 over three years.
Okay, so that's, yeah. But I looked, I looked into 24 just to get a, an estimate too, to see if you guys, you know, if you're going to be in trouble and had to do a transfer again.
You look like you're in pretty good shape going forward. I think we actually, we finished the plan, so now we're at 75.
We did 50 to 60, 60 to 70, 70 to 75.
So it should be, oh, that's a good one.
We're at 75.
We're at 75.
And we're told there's no change in our health insurance. So that part, unless we have a new employee, it should be fairly flat.
And when you increase to 75%, there's people you're going to draw into your program because of that, that would have been still with their husbands or spouse in another place. So that was all very understandable. We weren't hit with big rate increases, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah, Don's living Medicare and coming back to the town insurance.
Me too.
Those Medicare guys are saving you money.
Right.
Oh, yeah, so back to page 21. So how'd you get your $900,000? If you're on page 21, you see the very last column. It says variance with final budget positive, which is good, parentheses negative, which is bad. On the revenue side, you've got a $550,000 to the good. So that's, you know, of your $900,000, 550 came from revenue. And the biggest chunk of that was excise, $373,000. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, budgeting conservatively, which is kind of the trend in Massachusetts to say on excise, you don't want to budget too much in case you have a bad year and there's not a lot of vehicle sales and, you know, things like that. And the market turns and the value of the cars go down. The assessors billing out would drop, you know, greatly. And then you guys would kind of have a shortfall that you'd have to cover the next year. So that's kind of consistent with a lot of communities your size.
We, we lowball excise and plus some other advantages. I wanted to ask Dennis Martin, Dennis Mountain, who I know you remember. I don't know if you remember him, Brian, but I, he was big with the Bureau. And I said, can we lower our estimated receipts? He says, I don't care if you don't put any estimated receipts in because they want you to budget that way. I mean, especially when they went through what Chelsea went through several years ago. And so they don't question us cutting our budget. What they would cut, what they would address is, is that if we raised our estimates more than 5%, they want to know why. And we've never done that.
And then below that is your expenses. And you, you got about $300,000 there. And that's actually, even though it's a smaller number, didn't create as much free cash. I mean, one way of looking at that is, that's a great budgeting because you planned on a $15 million budget. You spent, you know, everything but $300,000. You didn't overspend any line item other than, looks like a small amount in public works. I didn't even bother looking that up because it was so small. But most of those line items are kind of right on. And, you know, since you're overall, you have your free cash at, or $900,000 has been consistent between $1 million and $700,000 over the last three years. That tells, tells me that, you know, you guys aren't going up and down. It's not dipping any one year. So like I said, once again, your, your budgeting has been kind of spot on and you're increasing your, you know, your reserves to where they should be. So, and the other thing was, you know, one of the things I haven't really talked about the departments too much, but the collection rate on the collector's side for your real estate taxes was 97%, which is outstanding. It's very rare to see much more than 95%. That whatever bills the assessors, you know, gave them and mailed out, that much came in, and that's great. So then you're not waiting for that revenue over years and years. So that's all I was going to talk about on here. Unless you guys have questions, I'd be happy to.
Well, we did get a hit on our free cash from some uncollected state funds.
I wanted to ask you about that. You mentioned in the meeting this morning. You also mentioned one, the gambling money, i.e. the casino money. You said you felt we hadn't been reimbursed for the crosswalk money.
Not all of it.
And I think I even asked Bob at an earlier meeting, you know, where we stood with the casino money. And he said, oh, it's all been spent. I thought it'd all been recollected. And that's from years ago. And we still haven't been reimbursed the first wave basically of the casino money.
Yeah.
And that's my concern when we talk about projects coming forward. And, oh, the casino will give us, we can get money for that. I'm like.
Yeah, you don't get it all.
Yeah.
You know, don't forget it's an estimate, you know?
Well, that's just that, even the part they owe us, they don't pay us.
Right, and then.
MVP.
You know, they say your state receipts are estimated state receipts. Legislature could cut that any quarter on you, you know? They haven't. Don't get me wrong. They haven't. But I think this, this hit that we took on the vulnerability project was a processing error, from what I understand, or a processing delay. According to Bob, I talked to him last week because I wanted to kind of tie in those two things. And he said, the project is done as far as the, where we are now, and we can collect the money now. Well, I always thought the project was way done because we paid for it. Why don't we have the money? And now we're bearing down. It's only four months left in the fiscal year. And I don't like to see our free cash. Now, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, it's kind of sandbagging free cash when you take away money that the state owes you. Because our free cash would have been well over $1 million, you know, if we had received our funds. So Bob was very active on that. I, from my last conversation with him, he said it was well in hand.
I'm hoping, yeah. And I don't know about the, the casino money. But you show it as being open, not fully reimbursed.
Right, good.
Because we got two crosswalks plus.
The sign, was the sign?
Sign thing as well, yeah.
Then we were questioning, you know, we were trying, talking about adding the third crosswalk.
Right, because I asked you, I mean, of the $100,000, how much are we actually? I mean, if the crosswalks were around 10 apiece, maybe 15.
14 and change.
Yeah, by the time you put whatever, and then the sign thing with, Scotty said it was 20 to 30 tops.
30-ish, yeah.
You would think out of the 100, there's still some money, right? That were, and we got a letter from the state that actually said, you've been awarded $100,000 for that casino mitigation money. Yeah, I have a copy of that, too.
We also were awarded $500,000 for windows and 1.1 for sidewalks. Yeah, we never saw that either.
No, that's why you don't appropriate it until you see the contract. Oh, they did finally pay for the trees, right, Don? They finally paid for the trees, right?
Yeah, they paid. It was that giant rubber check they brought, right?
It wasn't rubber. It was out of wood.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. So then the other report's a management letter. And I can, you know, I don't know how six pages long I can go over in as much detail or as little.
Please.
The main thing is that you had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which is kind of stated on page three. It gives you the definitions. They're long. And that just means basically, there's nothing being done that we found in any of your departments that would kind of make this at risk of being misstated. So then, you know, and, or if there was no fraud found or identified. If something like that was identified, Tom probably would have either talked to you or earlier or communicated you, with you in a letter or something along those lines. So none of that was found. So these are just other matters. And they're just, I like to say, like opportunities for the town to strengthen their policies and procedures. And we went over, when we find these things, we go over these with the department heads or the staff doing them, trying to make sure they understand and that they're not just hearing about this one. We give it to Cliff, and then Cliff says, oh, I didn't know they were doing this. You know, things like that. So, and I don't know if there's any certain ones you want me to go over or?
Well, we brought the Water Commission in so you can really talk to them about the stuff they've been doing. I mean, really, take them out in the hallway.
Get the big guys out there that's work us over. You beat us up, we're not going to change it either.
That's right. They got a $200 budget, but I want you to be strict with them, please.
You didn't question anything on there. You can always call me.
Yeah. Well, I just.
We appreciate the job that the financial team has done for years and years. We have a good system with checks and balances.
A great job as usual.
Makes our job easier.
I mean, I might say you were coming in and the treasurer's mysteriously on vacation, but.
Yeah, in the Cayman Islands, too.
In the Cayman Islands.
Yeah, it seemed like he was here. He was the MVP of the audit, but he helped us a lot of questions about where is this? Because he was, you know, here.
He coordinated vacation.
Him and him, the collector both.
He coordinated vacation.
Dick really, far as knowing where certain stuff is that, you know, oh, it's in this cabinet or it's kept in this box. So he did help out a lot.
Yeah, I wasn't much of assistant because that's when I was sick, so sick, but I tried.
We're good, no?
Yep.
You are, we are.
For another year or two, whatever you decide.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, bro.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have the Water Commission. Water, water everywhere.
You can fight over the last cookie.
We can fight over it. It's okay.
You can split it.
No, I'm good.
I don't want to share.
Fight over Don's last cookie, sorry.
Last time we were here, there was some discussion about some of the various costs. So I was going to put it on a spreadsheet, but the variables were ridiculous. So when would this format instead?
Right.
We, we had met January 29th to discuss.
Everybody, you guys both know Brian?
John Blaster.
Welcome aboard. John and Paul are the, two of the three members of the Water Commission. And they're handling the Scantic Valley Water District.
Anyway, okay, back in. So the 29th is when we, was our first initial conversation. That was basically the kickoff for what the state had visited us and made recommendations. We'll call it that. One of the recommendations that we thought as a, as a group here, that we see about connecting individuals within the existing water district now, basically Scantic Road. So I contacted someone that did some work for us earlier, had him give us a quote, an estimate, a guesstimate is a better way of saying it. So he came up with initially a hundred, or excuse me, eighty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. But it didn't include things like road detail, conservation work, meetings, interior plumbing. If it's unseen and at the time estimating, and plus beater and backflows will still be. So if I were saying, could it hundred, hit a hundred thousand? It could. I can't make that estimate because we don't know. So, anyway, Paul did this little workup that he handed you for the PFAS costs and this is two stages. One is the ones, the people within the existing water district. And then the second stage is the ones that the, are the homes that the state wants, recommends that we take care of. So that total comes with sixteen, seventeen services currently in use. There'll be added, adding another nineteen services for a total of thirty-six services. So, what happened? The engineer, Time Bond, the senior engineer, said that he doesn't see it, our pump station can handle that.
The full nineteen, yeah, the full additional nineteen.
Even the additional seven.
That's my, my first question. Can't even do the seven more?
He doesn't feel confident?
Hardware only, not the capacity of the wells by any means.
No, wells, luckily, we're, we're doing good there.
Plenty of water.
It's the...
The pumping. Holding tank and the pumps.
Right. You're at, you're at the limit. It's, it's, it never idles. It's constantly running. So we're going to burn it up.
Okay. If you added that much gallonage.
Yep.
We just need a larger capacity, right?
Yep, yep. That would be operating capacity plus reserve capacities and one thing, as I explained earlier, we had, it comes with two new tanks, so.
And if I remember correctly, when we were going through the initial engineering, they were breaking the project up into infrastructure upgrade of the pump house and then what, district expansion, right?
Correct.
In terms of the pump house part and even breaking that up further, obviously you have a potential for expanding the tank storage part. But it sounds like you're also concerned about the, the ability to pump and handle the increased gallonage if we added the seven homes.
With the existing system, yes.
But is there a, an A B that could be done? Like I say, the tank storage part needs to be done.
Correct.
But does it need to be done to add the seven homes? Or is the pump and pumping part the part that really needs to be done? Because that could break down by pumping an extra couple thousand gallons a day. Is that the one we're concerned more than the actual, the tank part at this phase?
I think it's both.
Correct.
Yeah, it is both.
Is it both? I think we have to get the pump house situation resolved first before we start expanding.
What's, what's that tank, fifteen hundred, the three thousand gallon tank?
Three thousand.
It holds fifteen hundred, right?
Yeah, it's, it's headspace, basically.
Yeah, it needs that air, that positive pressure to keep it down. That's why it's underground, the hydrodynamic tank.
I mean, we've seen through a couple of little catastrophes, right?
And drained it out.
Let out of water.
When the toilet here was stuck open.
Yeah.
drained it all.
You have a spreadsheet here with the different testing. Assuming we put the filtration thing, put a pin in that for later, hoping it doesn't get there. Just the testing cost alone, is how much more, I'm trying to figure from here.
If you look at the bottom line here, I've got the eighty-two thousand. That's the, that is the estimate for adding the houses in. Now there are some other...
Nineteen houses or the seven?
The seven. It's just the seven, eighty-two thousand. So if you deduct the testing cost, you're looking at a five and a half year ROI on that, if you want to look at it from that perspective. If, if the bottom line here, if the
Filtration.
Filtration was included, you're looking at a one point seven year ROI. Because it's a pretty hefty.
Like a no brainer at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, if you want to go above on this, I put a lot of what ifs in there. Because we're dealing with unknowns here. There's not a lot of historical data out there. I talked to Bill Fabry from WJ. What is, what's the other initial? Yeah. And he gave me a couple of histories from a, a different town that's already been hooked up. And what you do, what they do is they put in two filters. So you have one, then you have a secondary filter and they draw samples before, in between, and at the end. As long as there's enough, as long as there's nothing in between, the filters are good. So, you know, you could, you could have one filter that needs to be replaced once a year per household. So that's kind of your best case scenario. And for, just for illustration purposes, I put in there, worst case, if all of a sudden you had both filters every three months that had to be replaced, that's what the big number is here.
Four hundred.
It's probably not even, it's just, like I said, for illustration, show you, you're going to fall in the middle somewhere. Still an awful lot of money.
Now, this is all predicated on the fact that, like Dan said, potentially the threshold could be dropping severely as well.
Correct.
From twenty to four.
That's a possibility.
That's...
EPA.
Yeah, that's, how, how can we put that delicately? It's, it's not a done deal yet, but it's pretty, pretty well...
The trains off the station at this point.
Yeah, that's kind of the feeling.
They're going to announce it this year, when that is, we don't know. You didn't know either.
Right. So I don't maybe have that there. So, are you, obviously, in my mind, hooking them up to the system now would have been great because you would alleviate some of the potential filtration
Right.
and testing costs. But your point is that even the seven we'd like to hook up because it's minimal, because the line's already dry from going by their house. Even that unfortunately would require an infrastructure upgrade.
Compromises the current system.
Correct. And if, if it goes down, then everybody's down.
Right.
And rough and tough, looking at compressor and pump replacement, you're looking at about twenty-five thousand dollars there as a Band-Aid if it does go bad. If for some reason we blew up the pressure vessel, we're looking at a, what was it, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Which is ridiculous.
So what's your cost for the infrastructure upgrade at the pump station?
What was the latest year?
We don't have a good number on that, unfortunately.
You still have more for Jen?
I asked him for, when their date was it. They're going to make a presentation to selectmen. And they said they're looking for the fifteenth of March. Well, I haven't heard anything, so that's Friday. I don't think, I don't think it's going to happen. But we have some numbers here. What was the first one? I'm sorry, what was the first number?
The original was five, five hundred and fifty thousand, but she quoted you around seven.
Seven, so we don't know.
So, I would say, worst case, you're looking at seven plus what a ten percent continued to you.
And that's the new tanks?
New pump house.
New building, everything.
So would that, would that cover the seven houses and?
Well, that's also good enough for the extra houses.
But that would be for the extra, if we had to put the extra houses on too, right?
That should be enough to put on.
Or the twenty-two or whatever.
No, have all thirty-six customers.
But then the installation part for the seven after that is the cheapest installation.
Thirty, something.
Thirty total, thirty-six total.
Just a hook up from the line to the house.
So the seven installations just basically coming off the line, it goes in front of the house already.
Right.
Then the ten other ones, that's when you're running new line down the road.
Yes.
So that would be, you know, I know we're just throwing numbers around. Say it was in the hundred range.
Seem reasonable.
Would give you pretty good continuity, based on the number you did for ninety-eight Scannick.
Yeah, that was, that was nine eight, nine thousand eight hundred, or nine thousand five hundred.
Nine nine, something like that.
Something like that.
So say you figured ten per installation, a little contingency under a hundred.
Yeah.
That seems reasonable.
Now, he gave some guesstimates on that, John. Depending on how far it is from the street and so on, like, we had, the high was thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty. And the lowest was ninety-five hundred. So, on those, on these seven houses. So it's...
That's, yeah, it's right in line.
They're all...
Well, I'm trying to get a sense from the timing thing. We're trying to put the town warrant together right now. We have X number of dollars in ARPA, which we verbally have kind of committed, saying, look, the rest of the ARPA money is going to go towards the water project. We don't know a hard number. It's somewhere between, I'm thinking around four fifty to five.
Yeah, I'm estimating four fifty.
Yeah. So you're saying, fine, you're halfway there. By the time you hook the houses up, worst case in other thing, we're looking for seven fifty, eight hundred. Assuming the high, you know, that's six fifty to seven for the pump house and eighty to a hundred for the other.
Right.
So, are you saying to the board, because the timing thing here, it would be appropriate for the board to entertain a warrant article for up to half a million dollars for expansion of the water district infrastructure and start getting it done now? And I say that because the conversation we have with Dan Hall seemed to say, look, you guys need to take action now.
Yes, yes.
Be proactive so we don't have to come in.
Yes.
That's a light bulb, right? Do you think that's something the board should entertain?
Absolutely. I think we need to move forward on this.
That would cover infrastructure and the seven homes, if we were to throw down the warrant article. The others down the road, we're, we're still have to pay for testing.
Right.
And then maybe down the road, expand them in.
Maybe there's this rural grant or something that we talk.
I think there was some new PFAS thing. I saw something, I think.
Potentially, yeah.
Bob had sent something last week, I thought.
Now, if we, if we expand the geographic area of the water system, it's going to have to go for voter approval.
That'll be the next thing. Right now, your current district overlay covers these homes already?
Yes. These are within the district.
Within the labeled district already? Okay.
Weird how they were tied up because they're like, they skipped around, like the district laid out. But there's still homes that the district went right by
Correct.
that never serviced, which was...
Right, they were not included in the service.
Probably because, you know, twenty years ago, they weren't.
But they're in the district.
Geographic district.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So we don't need an ARPA change that at this point, right? We will if you go to phase two at some point.
Right, because we're looking at houses.
And that's your big number, Craig, at that point, the phase? Because that's the road work.
Yeah, that's, that's the secondary.
That would be Glendale.
Open the system back around, you know, crossroad and then back down.
Yeah, crossroads.
But your infrastructure's done at that point.
Right.
So now it's just...
Taking two pieces out of the apple.
The same thing we did for Main Street, basically, trenching and trenching and trenching, yeah.
So, I guess we...
I guess, Mr. Chair, I think we ought to add a warrant article for this.
I think it's necessary, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we want to wait on this one.
No.
Now, this is, in my opinion, this is a one-time charge. What I'm thinking, I'd like to get the number, but...
A one-time charge?
Basically, it's not a recurring charge. You know, it gets into, do you want to increase the budget by making it inside the budget? Or do you want to subject to a debt exclusion so it doesn't change your base number for the budget? See, I'm going with that. If you put it in, or we, Dick has said, we got enough in the levity to handle five, six, seven hundred thousand. We're only asking for four hundred here.
Are we though? Are we only asking for four hundred?
Well, I think we're talking, if we got four fifty already in ARPA...
Seven homes, you're looking at seventy thousand, right?
Total, yep. Plus the seven hundred for the expansion.
Right.
So I need another three, four hundred thousand to finish the product account. If we could tie down that number, then maybe, Donna, we have a meeting. So we're meeting with advisory next week to go over our budgets.
Right.
Can we also say that secondary, secondarily, let's have a financial plan for, as the second half of the meeting with them? Now that we've got some numbers for senior center, this and that and...
As far as, the budgeting goes, the water district is going to need an increase in the budget too. To, one, take account for paperwork and clerical. And two, the additional testing of the homes is now going to be rolled into the budget. So it's, what currently, what, sixteen homes, I think?
Sixteen.
Sixteen homes that are currently tested underneath their budget. You know, these additional homes that are be added to the district will be added to the regular testing schedule. So it's going to increase the budget.
That's kind of the next thing too. So, looking at the selectmen's budget that's on page three or four of our budget sheets. But should they be their own? I mean, hate to say it, I don't feel, these gentlemen now are doing more work than before. Although with that extra income by charging for water from those two or three houses, you guys are really offset.
You know, rolling a door, right?
Rolling, yeah. But I think they should be more enabled to set that budget number than we are.
I, I agree. But doesn't that require an additional warrant article for them to establish their own account?
Oh, no, no. There is the account there. I'm just saying, they should give us the numbers rather than it being under our budget or under our budget count.
Who created the budget in the past?
Nobody.
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 It's two lines. Basically, you have the operation and you have, you know...
Testing.
Testing.
It was just kind of like status quo for decades.
But you guys live with it, so you know the numbers were.
Yeah.
It's under our thing. We have to call you, hey, what's the number be? You put it in. Jane or Lauren will give you the budget sheet and you fill it in. Honestly, you have to defend it, but it's pretty easy. But what you have going behind you, it's going to be pretty easy to defend.
We have three people that are paying currently. So that's, that's about maybe three, four hundred dollars at the mark, probably not even that much.
Not enough for cookies.
You could amend that rate. Oh, boy, that's probably more we're going to get. That's more than we'll get from the electric charging at the senior.
I guess we threw the ball in your guys' court now.
Okay, we're going to do the warrant, but your guys are going to add the testing to your, figure out the testing out to your, to your budget. Just what it is.
Because it won't be done in, this is not going to be done in time for, so it needs to be on your budget request. Now, say this got passed the town meeting, say the work got done by the end of September, you just won't spend all the money.
Right.
Yeah. We could even go back in October and reduce the number before setting the tax rate if we got lucky. Conversely, you might say, look, you're going to vote that July first, you're not going to find a company to come in and, and do that work in two months. Who's to say? This is the type of bidding thing and all that. I think...
Pretty tight line.
Yeah. If I was, you know, making a bet on this, I would say you'd have good luck. You're going to have a good presentation. Honestly, we don't have a second choice on this.
No.
So just make that...
The government's making it.
D P. You can pay this much now, but the bill's going to be like this if you don't do it now.
The fines, the fines are going to be like this.
Fines like that and testing, you're going to, like you, Paul, you showed the, the return on investment. You spend this now, you're dropping this testing.
Yeah, the thing, what really scares me is if we do have a catastrophic failure at the pump house before we upgrade it, then you're going to be throwing money, a lot of money away for nothing.
Obviously, the thing is though, too, you get back to Jen and try and really put the fire at their feet and say, look, we really need some hard numbers.
And I think we, when they came to us months ago, they talked about splitting that up into two projects. And I, I think we're at that point now, where it's, it's two projects.
Yeah.
Any thoughts, Brian? I know you had a water and sewer department up in Watley, right? Ongoing thing all the time, improvement, improvement, improvement. Were you guys getting into PFAS up there as well?
Um, yeah, they had detected one that spoke. It did a tripping threshold, so.
Yeah. Well, what they told us before, currently it's twenty.
Yeah.
And EPS has been possibly down to four.
Part per trillion. Small.
I mean, twenty to twenty's...
Four per trillion, right.
And it's pretty much everybody that's had it hit is kind of...
What is that?
Yeah.
One Lego in a size of a field?
Probably detected in this.
How about Audubon Society? So, sorry, we have to, we have to communicate. Time Bond is looking for...
Well, we should start, the contact should start with, is Jonah Keane. And I'll send you his information. He's a guy I dealt with in the past. And I have something to report on Audubon later when the selectmen reports as well.
Okay.
Separate from what you guys are doing. They have some pines they want to talk about. You guys may not care about pines at this point.
Not at all.
Unless they don't fall on your house, you're like...
Don't fall in the pump house.
Oh, here's a quick question. And I think Craig kind of talked about that. If you do this work, how out of service are you? I mean, do they have a thought? I mean, you're like, okay, we're going to do this thing, like, okay, we're disconnecting. I mean, you build your new tanks first, you're going to obviously switch them over, and then you're changing out the pump. Is that like a two-day thing?
No, no, no. Build a new...
So you got everything ready, built, and move the bike?
Right. And then you just hook up to your new pump house.
Be a parallel life. Potentially a flush?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it'll probably be a little interruption because our house has sanitized the whole system, but...
Which we've had to do.
Right.
Yeah, I think the changeover was pretty minimal, from what they were saying, but...
So put everything in place then.
Everything's brand new. And then you're, you're taking, just taking the old housing offline and putting it into the new infrastructure.
Right. Take the hose off of here, put it over there.
Pretty much, pretty much. You move from the kitchen to the bathroom.
Okay, good. I got twenty-five Capone trucks here or something like that.
Well, it's only if we blow something up before we get to that point, then we're going to be in trouble.
I rebuke that, all right.
Easy.
Now you put it on the record. Don't write that down.
We got a plan.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Sean.
So...
You got a meeting tomorrow too, right?
Basically, it's just paying us the bills because Bob will be there hopefully. It's going to be a pretty quick meeting.
Tell Bobby he's charging too much for me.
Do we tell him every month?
Thank you.
Is Bob, does Bob do the police station? Does Bob do the police station?
I believe so.
And you might see him tomorrow?
Yeah, well, he should be there.
Remind him, we sent that letter. That thing, that sprinkler system better be disconnected. Because we're under order from the D P to get it done. So. It's not like, it's not like, oh gee, do we have to? Yeah, they were pretty clear. And you don't want a second letter.
No, no. I guess everything's one way of the state, right?
One way is good. You don't want the ping pong match. You really don't. Don will tell you that, like, if you get into a back and forth with them, you just don't win.
No.
Two twenty Mill Road Solar.
That's another one, exactly.
That's another pilot. That's a change, they changed the pilot. We gotta do a different. Even warning for the town meeting.
I agree with what Kelly said, you know. I think it was part of they wanna go back and plus they wanna get back into, what, they changed the chapter?
It's like that other one.
I'd like to look a little bit more into that whole pilot thing. I don't know. If they didn't wanna do it at first, and now they wanna do it, it just raises some.
John.
Yes?
Do you want the opportunity to grow the financial wizards of the school? What?
Surely got grilled enough.
We just did our financial wizardry down the other end of the hallway.
It's like Monopoly money over there.
You're not actually, well, Aaron's on camera. You're not, you're clear, John. I don't mind. Is the budget going up much this year? Are we in big trouble? I saw you at the last meeting. It didn't sound that bad.
We're not in big trouble. Do you have any more of the sheets?
Let me see what I have here. I could, so this is going to be our presentation. I've only got, I think I've got one copy of everything, so if you guys want to make copies. This is, I have, oh, I have at least three. Four copies of the colored sheet. Three, there's a fourth, but that'll leave me without one, so.
You can print more tomorrow.
I can print more tomorrow, so you can have it. I just, I'm gonna have a hard time. Oh, nope, here's a copy of it. So, you know, second page top is your section. Largely, what you're gonna be worried about for net assessment. Line twenty-eight would really be the total assessment, including gap.
And there is one capital project. For Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi access points.
Off the trampoline back up again? It wasn't on last year's, wasn't on last year's capital list?
It was on last year's, yeah. Well, they're twelve years old now, with an expected life of eight to ten.
I T, an I T budget for like yearly maintenance?
Not, I mean, not for this, no, I mean, this is a.
They've gone more than a decade.
Yeah, well, that's, should they be going a decade though?
No, no, I mean, ti- typical, I mean, it's it's actually more like twelve years. You know, typical lifespan for, you know, Wi-Fi access is is gonna be eight to ten. So, you know, we're we're stretching out the usable life. We're there with our camera system too. So the camera system is original to the building as well, so we're twelve years on the camera system.
I recall Sees pointed at your meeting, yeah, I can tell it's a car outside. I can't tell the color of the car.
I I view it as a little bit differently too, because as opposed to phone books, which one dies, you put, give the kid another one and it's running again. A lot of times when you do Wi-Fi, the technology has changed so much from the last time you replaced it. You're not just doing an access point and access point, you're redoing your whole system.
So you're looking at a three percent, three percent for Hamden and almost four percent roughly for Warham?
Give or take, yeah.
Anything from the state on the reimbursement and transportation reimbursement? Are they gonna try to get that hundred percent yet?
No, we're predicting somewhere in the ninety percent range. They've they've kept it there the past few years. Yeah, so we're, we're just about that right now.
Is that in everybody's budget at this point? I mean, when you talk about the House, the State, sorry, the House, the Senate?
No, just just the governors at this point.
We haven't seen the other budgets.
The governor actually funded it a little below ninety percent, but I'm being hopeful. And I think it's a safe hopeful.
So this will not require you thinking about adding more choice students or just?
Um, not substantially more. I mean, we're gonna look at, you know, the high school, we always. Lose twenty-five to thirty, we put twenty-five to thirty back in. We'll look at onesie twosie seats, so I know I'm I'm talking to the principals right now. I've talked to the principal of Sewell Road. She has a smaller fourth grade coming up than she had, has had fifth and sixth this year. So when they come to fifth grade, I've talked to her, Sewell, Stony Hill being a much smaller building. I I tend to not wanna add choice kids there if I can avoid it. So Sewell Road's a little bigger. You know, so it would be, you know, one or two choice seats per, they have seven classes. So, you know, I think I I talked to her about taking nine choice kids just to round it out to an even number of students per class. So I think twenty-one per class.
All right, did you say your Ezra money ran out? This was the last year?
Yeah, this is the last year of Ezra. Yeah, so so some of this budget includes losing three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Ezra. But we've, you know, through some of the Green Meadows collapse of the middle school, we have some savings. We haven't had to lay anyone off. Most of those physicians have found other places within the district. I capped health insurance to zero percent this year. I don't know if I've shared it with you, that was. Knowing that this was gonna be a really ugly year, it does kick the can down the road a little bit, you know, next year. But I just couldn't have, I couldn't live with SCantix sitting on nine and a half million dollars in free cash. When the districts and the towns are kind of struggling post-COVID right now.
In the past, they always did maybe a free month every now and then with that much in the cash reserve. Is that what we're going to try or are you kind of?
I'm just going straight.
Or just take care of the increase out of.
Just zero percent. They're taking the increase out of that, yeah. So they've had a couple really good years, and so actually our retiree health insurance is actually pretty low as well. So, you know, those are some things that have helped us out along the way.
Next year is year two of the contract at this point, of the teacher contract?
This is year.
This is, we're going into year three. This will be year three.
Get it done. By the time you're finished, you're always inside the, well, it's not my turn this time. It's Warham's, thank you.
It weren't okay last year, though.
It did go okay, yeah.
We'll see what happens.
You'll go out the other door next time, walking by our door.
Yeah, walking into.
New Town Administrator? Hi, Aaron Osborne.
John, thank you for reaching out on the Zoom. As you can tell, we have more use for for Brian than just being the Zoom operator. Not just for us, but planning is busy, Concom is busy. No, I think Ted had to run the Zoom at that time. So if we could find, no, seriously, we just need a student, somebody. Maybe you could find somebody to help out with your public forum.
Make a few bucks.
Half hour blank thing was.
We're helping with the posting, so hopefully someone wants it.
Or community service, even if they've got that type of thing.
We can have that conversation.
Great, thank you both.
Thank you so much.
All right, so two twenties Will Street, they wanna, we gotta redo, well, they had, we. We had a solar pilot that town approved, but now they've changed the law, so now we gotta, they wanna do solar pilot. And you're our, you're at.
So, I'd like to revisit the whole pilot program thing because.
You wanna invite your assessors in and have them do a little?
I would, you know, I I emailed. And she gave me a rundown, said, you know, that doesn't account for new growth anymore, and are we losing out on tax revenue on it? So my my question is, what are the benefits for pilot for the town? Are they still there going forward?
Click, click, Kelly. We're unmuting you.
I'm here. Hello, how are you? Yes, so as far as this, I I received the email last week from Altis. They be, this project at two twenty Mill Road became taxable effective fiscal year twenty-three. So they're now in two years and asking if the town. They they reached out asking if we had any other solar facilities under the SMART program. That are currently taxed through pilot agreements, and if so, if it would be possible to enter into such an agreement. And as you mentioned, for this one, it was approved back at the annual town meeting in April twenty-fifth of two thousand and eighteen. That the town voted in favor for the selectmen to discuss and possibly, you know, negotiate and enter into an agreement. But because of the change in the legislation, if that was something that there was any interest in, you would, that would need to go to town meeting again. Because the town would first have to approve that under the new law before any discussion. And even if that's done, it doesn't necessarily mean you have to enter into an agreement. It's just that would need to be done before. Before discussing further. As far as the the benefits of the pilot. So for the town, the the main benefit on our side is that we have an agreed-upon schedule of values. On their side, the developer side, they would like to see, you know, have an idea of how much they're gonna be paying out for twenty years. So that they can figure out what the profit is gonna be. But on our side, having a set schedule of values does help. Because it's less liability of them appealing their values and bringing us to the appellate tax board, which can be costly. So from our side, that's the biggest thing. And as far as the new growth, that's something that has switched. As you know, we we used to be able to account for the new growth. That very first year when it became taxable. When we had this new change in the legislation, they left out that wording. So we now have to report it differently, and we cannot constitute that as new growth. But with the Municipal Empowerment Act, if that does go through, they are looking to put those, that wording back in. So that it would be new growth again. For this particular project, that wouldn't matter. Because we did get the new growth when it, when it went on for fiscal twenty-three. So, but for any future projects, that would matter.
Just to touch on that municipal empowerment act. Isn't that the thing that takes all the?
Control away from the town?
Away from the town and gives it to the state.
So who are they empowering?
Not us. That's my problem.
There's a list, there's a number of different things that they're looking to change. I know I had forwarded some information that I received at one of my trainings through the D O R. Because I I went on to find out the different things that could affect us in the assessor's office, and there were a number of things.
I think I saw something, was it on social media that they were?
So Kelly, if if they don't have the pilot agreement, there's, you're taxing them of personal property. And it depreciates over the year.
Yes, yep, there's a five percent depreciation until it reaches thirty percent, and the and the pi- and the panels have a twenty-year lifespan.
So if it's a million dollars first year, and then it's nine hundred and fifty thousand the next year. And then nine hun- nine hundred and five thousand and, right, okay.
I wish.
That's your tax.
And the, yeah, and the thing with the pilots too, so something that when, when all of these agreements with the solar companies first started. The original intent was to have it be a set schedule of values and just having, having the town and the developer. Agree upon these values. And then, and then as they went on, some municipalities had started making it more of a schedule of payments versus values. Because that's what the, you know, a lot of the developers would like to see, is to know the exact amount that they're gonna be paying. And some of them like to structure them differently. Some prefer to pay more upfront, some like to start off less and have the payments escalate. And others ask to have, pay the average a set amount every year for twenty years. So the few that we have that are already approved in town, we do have a few that are are different. We have, you know, one that's an even payment, and we have a couple that are, I believe they're, I don't have it in front of me, I believe it's escalating. But in order, you know, one thing that I think would be, would be good. To have a schedule of values, if they approve the values, I can still provide the selectmen with an estimate of what I believe the amount would be. Over the twenty years, based on the current tax rate. I obviously can't assume the tax rate. But that, if if it was done that way, then they would still be liable to the impact that the tax rate would have, just like everyone else does. So whenever, you know, if the tax rate increases or decreases, that affects everyone's tax bills for real and personal property. And if it's a schedule of estimated payments that are agreed upon, then obviously the tax rate would not affect them necessarily. We do account for some of that when we, when we've done the estimated payments in the past by adding a two and a half percent annual escalator. To make sure that, so that way, you know, if if the tax rate did increase, that would account for for most of it. But but that's something that I just wanted to mention, I think should be, you know, kind of thought about for the future. And just as far as consistency for for future pilot agreements, just to have them all be structured the same would be helpful.
One thing, you did send us a a breakdown of what we're receiving for tax payments from solar projects.
Oh, yes.
And referring back to, it didn't have the the landfill in at that time, because I know it's been a split payment, half pilot, half personal property, I think. Or half lease, I mean.
Lease, yes.
But I think it's right around a hundred thousand dollars. And if you looked at your twenty twenty-five with your proposed, just over a hundred for Borrego. The town is receiving, gonna be receiving around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxes for these solar projects. So. And you got a couple still, still pending, not on the books yet.
That's right.
So if we go to the town meeting for this warrant article, we don't necessarily have to enter into a pilot, right? It's just if we wanna think about it, right?
Exactly, yes. It does not, it does not, it does not make it a requirement in any way. It's just something that would need to be in place if the board decides they'd like to, you know, look into it as a possibility or discuss it.
Right. Anything else?
Um, not with assessors, but just on the note of solar. I was reading this weekend, and some communities are charging the solar. Facilities a cap over a certain megawatt, like if they produce so much, they get more payment to the municipality. So it's something to think about in negotiations.
Yeah, I'm surprised about that, because I mean, it's pretty clear that what their production is gonna be based on the panels when they bring the project forward. I mean, unless they're, and I think in most of the agreements, improvements are covered and you get additional taxes. And, because I've seen that listed, if they change out equipment, there's higher things you can renegotiate. But I would think the math would have been worked out at the get-go. Some of these, I will say, Dom will say, you know, taken us five, six years to get through the landfill. Who's to say the panels haven't gotten better?
Just on the topic of solar, I was wondering if maybe we should entertain reforming the solar bylaw committee. Just because of all the changes going on in the legislature, all the things going on in the town, you know, would it be good to have another committee charged with looking into?
Zoning?
The zoning, you know.
Twenty-seven volunteers that are beating down our door, looking to be on some.
Well, you know, I I think it's an boring thing that.
I have to say, I ran into a couple of people at Stop the Shop the other day, and Jerry's on sale, and better than Big Y, Don. And they were looking for something to participate in. They both retired, was a professor from Winnick, and looking for a way to volunteer. So this goes back to, hate to say it, almost run that ad again, just keep expanding it and keep putting it out there.
I I I think, you know, if if we would see fit, that if we wanted to reform the solar bylaw committee, I think we just need to put a note out there, and eventually we'd have some interest. And, you know, again, there's lots of changes in the regulations. Kelly even mentioned a lot of the national laws changing. Even things changing on a daily basis within what they're, you know, allowing, you know, the municipal, municipal empowerment act, you know. How does that stuff affect us as a community, you know? We need a committee there to be able to charge that a little bit more.
I think we should consider that. All right, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
So we'll we'll put a warrant article for that, just as a placeholder for us if we got to do that. Uh, Vedar, we'll skip that for this evening.
Yeah, just quick comment. Don, I thought your letter was good.
What a health coordinator job description.
So this says, the breaks of the list we have before, we ask to have the different things checked marked as to specifically DOHs. Specifically facilities, things like that.
And then she's got, you know, the emergency management stuff on here too, three different things. Should we be budgeting this year for facilities person?
I'd like to.
You know, in in our budget?
And I believe there's a couple of people interested in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, from, Mark's talked about it, and maybe some from Highway, things like that. I don't think we're talking a full-time person, but we need a consistent person is what we need.
Right. What do you think, really? Ten hours a week, maybe? Ten hours a week, maybe?
At most, I think, yeah. Not to exceed. You know, I, not to say it's not gonna be advertised, et cetera. But if somebody from Highway was that person to me, it's a natural fit for public work and me.
I think you'd have to come up with a job description too for that, that type of position, just what are the roles, responsibilities for that?
Again, I kind of go back to what happened before and like, I bring Brian in on this, that. We're not the first town to talk about facilities management. You may be aware of it from other communities, that we can. Grab somebody else's frame work to start with and go from there. You know.
Yeah.
And I'd also mention to Brian today, like, take him on a tour of the town buildings, you know. You know, over the senior center, probably go to the lunch. Up at the highway when they're loading.
Okay, so we gotta be all walking around the, the railings?
Off the fire escape, somebody's gotta test it.
You'd be the first guy to go over.
You guys gotta go.
All right, so, so what do we wanna do with these? Just divide them out, pull the facilities out and see what it looks like?
Pull facilities out. There's the emergency management stuff that I talked about bringing into, you know, our role. So just straight board of health stuff.
Other than, I think, uh, you know, there are things on here that. Because we have an incredibly talented person, that's been done over there. Something like the employment package to new employees, I think comes back to the, uh, maybe the TA role. N A A, something like that.
So let's, let's next week divide these out and.
Yeah, yep. I think I appreciate Jane's work on that tonight. I think it's a good start. Again, same thing, if you can talk her out of it, Brian, keep working on that.
Try.
All right.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
I've been trying.
You got, you got food permits?
I do. So we're all aware of the event that's happening up at the starting gate or Great Horse in a couple of weeks, so. Jane and Lauren have been inundated with places. There is the cherished cookie creations. I got a motion from you, Don.
Cookies?
You bet.
Did someone mention cookies?
Uh and the tribe power bites.
Try or tribe?
Tribe.
Tribe.
Yeah. Anyhow, they both take a one day permit to be at the uh Bay to Store a Cause event on March twenty third. At Great Horse, oh, excuse me. Patty Cakes Cupcakes. Mama Life Oils and Wellness. You're not lighting your face up.
No smile, no.
And for a penny, for a pound.
That sounds, that sounds a little too healthy for me.
Cast the oil for them. Anya, motion to uh approve one day permit.
Someone's over here.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Don, you can hand deliver the cookie one.
Okay, let's see, budget review. Take a look at our budget, see how bad we're doing.
I think a lot of the changes on there are still, obviously we're still waiting for.
Yeah.
Cola.
Waiting for Cola, we gotta. The Board of Health age, uh Board of Health Coordinator, so.
Dog Officer.
Dog Officer, we gotta do that yet. Didn't, didn't.
Scott say he was keeping that?
Scott is keeping that.
Yeah, Scott is keeping Dog Officer.
Scott is keeping Dog Officer. Property lab, is that a good number now?
It is. We actually got a letter from Barry. So.
That's an awful, that's a big increase.
They were to expect eight to ten percent.
Why?
And insurance guy can't buy a. Experian, something like that. I mean, the employee benefit not going up much. Uh it does go, even though the insurance was flat. I think that's realistic, the fact that since employees' wages will be going up with the cola. Um buyouts, there is only one buyout that we know of, uh Highway Department employee. Oh, excuse me, pardon me, two. Well, potentially two. Brian, keep working on it. You keep saying that. Uh longevity is zero because we have the last person that qualified as retired. Long claims, I mean, I thought we should drop a little bit.
We're doing okay with that.
I did appreciate the fact that Rose did stop by this morning and, and meet with Brian, so I could bring him up the date.
And called me later in the day.
Excellent.
So she made her money back. Just kidding.
She called him later, so she made her money back from, from the food she dropped off. That's horrible.
Stormwater management.
They wouldn't be like that. Temporary help. I mean, are we comfortable with that? Cause that is the flexibility we have.
Yes. Yeah, we gotta go up there.
Second expense, same thing like the thing with the senior center, you can do the wetland mapping, where else? Uh transportation station testing, as you can see. I think that's reflective.
The stormwater, back up to stormwater management. Wasn't there, were we?
That's why I threw the note on there.
Okay.
That's just there, but I think we need a report from Gary, Ty and Bond and John.
But weren't we in like year six of the MS four or something like that?
Something like that, and I think it was a potential for another public thing at this point too.
They usually do that in May.
Right.
They've done that in May in the past.
I think Gary Time Bond, who was the Time Bond person handling it? It was Tom, but he left it, somebody else, yeah. But that number needs to be checked from them. Veterans benefit, I believe they got that number from Jason. They had a recent uh district meeting and that's good.
Oh yeah, you put costing utilities up at Academy Home.
Yeah, the uh, the utilities going up and stuff. Uh postage, I really thought that should have been bigger. I mean, I thought there were two bumps in the past year.
It just went up a month ago.
Yeah, yeah. That was the number from the uh town clerk's office, so.
But on the other hand, we're already at nine thousand, we've only got a few months to go, so.
Well, and the things are, it's, that may. The last page, uh I T is just um. That's the, is I T, let me go back to page, I think it's page two. Acquisition. Page two, Craig?
Yeah.
And that number may be low, cause I think when we heard from Andre, there was just the number of computers they were thinking that needed to be swapped out. Was pretty high. And that's why I thought that, that bump needed to be twenty five, cause there was actually a projected pretty big hardware number. For the coming year.
We had to, we had to replace our own server. Did we do that yet? Was, or was that?
That was done.
That was done?
Yeah. But again, just from the, I think desktops that were out of compliance, so put a little extra in that. Um website thing, uh I talked about this with, with Brian. We've got quite a bit of a thing going on with Civic Plus where they're saying that Bob authorized. The upgrade to the Civic Plus Advanced.
Right.
I said to them, it came up at, at our meeting.
Yeah.
And we clearly directed Bob, no, we don't need the advanced package.
Right.
And he says, I didn't tell him to do it. All we did was the Audio I thing to be in compliance with the DLC.
My, my question is, if they don't have a signed contract.
No.
So then therefore.
Stop billing us.
Stop billing us, they owe us money now.
Well, we haven't paid.
Okay.
Yeah. This part here, the money we paid, which is over the thing, was putting the Audio I in the one year installation for us, like that.
What are the other options? Uh I know Bob said there was another, um, another provider that did web, municipal websites.
They have to check. I mean, Civic Plus was, and actually for towns under fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, they are the go-to. You would have a hard time finding a website and.
So my, my question is, does the upgrade make it easier to? Work on the website, because it's horrible to navigate and.
It is, but I'm. With that upgrade, you're talking need I T department.
Right, but does that upgrade make it easier for us to go in there and create a board or committee and, you know, manage the website? Cause right now it's.
I'm sure it does, but is it worth that thing?
Well, that's my question, is it worth it?
Right now, you're right. I mean, I can add a person, but to make a whole page thing and. Bob hasn't done it. I mean, cause he added like the government study committee.
I, I mean, I just did it today.
Look where, did you, for the building, it was already there, you put the fiber optic on, yeah, yeah. And so anyhow, that's the explanation for that number there. Custodial. Jane has not been happy and we've heard that from a lot of people here, that the current crew is not doing a very good job. She has gotten a quote from somebody else with pretty good references. And a different schedule of cleaning. It is more money. But I think her point is that, yeah, but right now for the money we're paying, we're not getting the job done. People aren't happy, it's not dusted, it's not vacuumed. You can save money, but if they're not cleaning the car, what have you paid for? So she'd like to come in and present at this price here. This would also include, I think there's a. Stripping that's done once a year at the auditorium, one time.
The wax.
Yeah, and the uh, the hallways too.
Gasoline.
Been pretty good.
Street lighting.
Saw two ninety-four in uh. In East La Metal today.
Yeah, it's an indicator.
Street lighting, again.
Then we have to do some of the gasoline pump maintenance.
And that's, I got it down there, that's a placeholder. And I think he got, came over and said there was a. Was it the tank and the whole thing, yeah. Um, street lighting, this goes back again, I think I talked to Brian about this a bit. We have a P P A agreement with Syncarfa. I asked about having them in here. I'd like to find out where we are. It's been four or five years we've had this thing. We talked about aggregation. Is this something that dovetails into that? We've saved money by having this P P A, cause we haven't had to increase street lighting enormously. When you look at how much electricity has gone up in years. But I still would like to know, is that the best plan we've got for us right now? And either we get them to come in, Brian, or we put, cast the net and see if there are anybody else out there. So, it's an arcane thing. I think Jane will tell you. Reconciling the bills at the end of the year, applying the credits, you see them come in the envelope there and you're like.
Doesn't even make sense.
Right, but you were just initially, I thank you, because at the end of the year. Cliff and the Department of Revenue agree to it and make it work out and our bill doesn't go up. When you know electricity's going up. So. Anyhow, for an increase here, the thirty thousand. I'm surprised it doesn't have to go up a little bit because we added the ten lights. Mostly in the ball one area, right?
Yeah, are they still swapping out LEDs?
That's done.
That's already completed.
That's done, yeah. I believe the last one was done a couple of weeks ago. Don't ask why.
Wildlife control.
Uh, I don't think there's any hope of controlling the wildlife in hand at this point.
That's our code name for parties.
Not that that was.
Yeah, Ryan's writing that down now, okay.
All right, emergency management, we got that, traffic. Board of Health expands. Are we gonna take the water district and the water test out and make, give them their own little thing, water commission?
We could give our own, I just think they, they should give us those two numbers.
Yeah, do you wanna leave them in here for this, this round and have them just give us the numbers and budget accordingly?
Yeah.
Ambulance, we don't know what's gonna happen, we're gonna look at their contract.
Oh, shared services right now is blank because as you heard, you know, waiting for a final number from uh Finn.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, the good thing is, um, I think, I'm sure we can find that shortfall, what did they say, around seventy-five hundred?
Yeah.
Even long claims.
Pick that up out of.
That's the rebate for the ambulance, so I'll follow that, although you can't directly transfer. Well, emergency management, uh through a little extra because it's similar to what happened before, the uh.
Things go outdated.
Exactly, refurbishment, you know, basically replenishing some supplies and some are outdated, they have to get rid of them. Other than that, that's pretty much our budget.
Look at it again next week.
Is that, we have a public hearing first next week and then the budget, is that what this?
Your public hearings on the poll position?
Are we doing poll by poll, one poll, one, one poll per week?
Oh, it's double polls. Two, two.
I'm blowing up the pictures Don took. We're gonna have them on the backboards all around the auditorium.
You mean, the polls with nothing underneath them?
Those are good, yeah, yeah. If you can give me some drone shots, that would be nice, going down Allen Street, showing the double polls.
You want pro bono drone shots?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, kind of having the annual town meeting.
I asked the fire department, or the police, never mind.
Town reports, yeah, it's a thing, the annual budget, buyer bills is.
How was the town report?
Spending limits. How was the town report?
Coming along, there's a few things I need to still get from people, but Jane's been helping me with it.
Enterprise fund, community preservation, that's a placeholder, waiting to see what builds there. Conservation, that's the usual thousand dollars. Chapter ninety, that's the state money, library is state money. Landfill tower lease, that's, we gotta do that, we, that's no cost, that's not a money item, so money, I, I had money coming to us.
Yeah. I'd like to, when we get into that. After hearing about that number that Scott brought to us for the other tower, also owned by the same company, S B C. I think we need to have a conversation, you know, that lease coming to us. And any other tower owned by them in the town or something. What was it, sixty grand or something?
No, no, it's, it was twenty something, twenty something.
Pretty good number.
Fire station design, they're gonna come in with some kind of money there. And the sack bill, we just discussed Scantic Valley Water District. I don't know if it's expansion or improvement, maybe it's, needs to be improved, cause, oh, we are expanding it though, cause we're gonna, we're gonna add.
Infrastructure upgrade maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
Where's the?
Well, we're not gonna do that, for sure.
No, I mean.
You didn't get the memo?
I guess not.
Oh, yes, not in here.
It's definitely should be there.
So we gotta put senior center in here.
Now, now it's a fight for a position, I wanted to be before. I didn't think, Mark didn't want a dump truck this year. We just got one. He didn't ask for a dump truck.
He didn't, no, he didn't ask for a dump truck.
No.
He talked something about a truck though.
He did talk about a truck, but I don't think he.
It might have been one of the smaller trucks, which I think we had, no, cause he's got the truck arriving, right? We're done with the truck.
And you want a lawnmower?
Lawnmower, which was not gonna be a, only a mardor.
A lawnmower.
I don't remember.
I, I remember asking.
I remember, yeah, the, the zero turn, right?
Right, right. Ask about a lawnmower, cause I asked, apparently the goats weren't working out, so we gotta buy a lawnmower to it.
Wow. Twenty first century solutions.
All right, so we gotta get the senior center in there.
The sixteen dropping at this point, or like you say, it's a placeholder?
We better, we better check with, Brian, can you check with the highway about the truck? I don't think, I don't think you said that.
Definitely wasn't a plow truck, maybe it was a pickup truck.
Maybe, maybe, yeah.
No, we did that last year, cause we gave it to Park and Rec, we gave it, the old one to Park and Rec, yes.
Was that last year or the old?
Yeah. A year or so ago.
Yeah, two years?
All right, then you get the regional school committee, that's probably not gonna be there, Article sixteen is probably gonna be also there. We'll just leave it for now, but that's gonna probably be gone. Uh, government study committee's got a bunch of proposals, four of them. Which, by the way, they really need to be rewritten, and I looked at them and they're not.
Yeah.
Very clear. So I think they sent them to Rose, so she should look at it. School resource, that's a typical thing. I think they just sent the bill, it's about eleven thousand nine hundred, something like that. Advisory Committee Reserve Fund, General Stabilization.
I made one point, I'll go back to twenty-one there, you know, I reserve my comment on a couple of the other ones, but. I did suggest to you, Bob and Donna. Maybe there's a way to, you know, we have two town meetings a year. You can't tell me we can't find a group of towns willing to invest in this and like share them. Cause I mean, every town has maybe, maybe three, or an annual and two specials. And why would one town invest in this when you could have a group of towns? Cause what are the chances of having town meeting on the same day? Or you pick your towns, so, you know, we use it, Munson uses it, try and get like-sized towns.
Oh, I see for the, yeah.
If we're gonna get these devices.
Sounds like a business opportunity.
Well, it could be. I mean, maybe there are chances for leasing. I asked you, how many people, you know what the limit for, the minimum for town meeting in Whately is?
Ten?
Yeah, zero.
Smallest one we ever had was two. For special town meetings.
It's pretty good.
It was right when COVID struck, it was the.
It was right when COVID struck, it was the, it was the moderator and the town clerk.
The select board didn't even show up? Well, hopefully, hopefully those two got along. I vote to move to adjourn, I'm not gonna second it.
There's only bare essentials.
Yeah, I guess so.
So we got selectmen, one selectman, one assessor, three cemetery commissioners, two parks and rec. One library trustee and one Hamden-Wilburn Regional School District Committee, one planning board. Who's on the planning board? Who's, oh, must be one of the.
I don't, I don't think that's right, is it? I don't think it's right, the cemetery, why wouldn't it be one, one and one? Because aren't they operate off, aren't they one per year?
I think it's just three in general, I don't think.
Yeah, but it can't be, because it says.
There's the choice of three years.
Oh, I get you.
So it's gotta be, it's gotta be one, one year, one for two years, one for three years. One, 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 one. The planning board, and is the assessor, was that actually, was he, his term actually up, or is that?
I think so, yes. Yeah, I think Jason was up this year.
Alright, anything else to come before the board?
Yeah, I want to give a selectman report, basically, a quick thing about, um, and I asked to have this, I think, on a future agenda, maybe the twenty-sixth. So Jonah Keen, who's kind of the caretaker for this area, reached out to me, they're. Looking for it just to be, uh, and I think I sent you an attachment for the, the area there, so. You have the property behind Green Meadows. The original Green Meadows property and then the Bureau property, you know, if you remember that. Bill Bureau was gonna pass away and buy it while he lived to a hundred and one, so finally, we got the property, which extends behind, and that's actually where the new well is. For the school. At the back of that, it butts up the Audubon, there's a stand of some type of pine tree. Or pine, some kind of pine, that they're looking to do restoration around, which includes brush trimming, stuff like that. It's pretty rare in this area. It butts the town land, they'd like permission from the town to draw a little circle, basically, on the part of the land we're not using. So they have the right to maintain that stand of pine.
On our town land?
Well, it's mostly on theirs, but it would encroach a hundred feet into ours. This is the big parcel, it's actually on the other side of the brook. Behind Green Meadows.
So they're gonna maintain property on town land?
Yeah, they'd like to.
What's the legalities of them maintaining property on town land if they do it for so many years, can they claim that land?
No, no, they cannot. But she wants to come to the board and present the shit we're talking about.
We have an open door policy.
Both ways, right?
Except when we need to make big decisions.
Turn that off.
Alright, what else you got?
I think it's the biggest thing, these pine trees, darn it. Uh, seniors, pardon, senior center building committee, obviously, we're gonna have the forum on the twenty-first. Uh, we also have that budget hearing, I think, not the roundtable, but the first Georgia presentation. Uh, the forum does, sorry, the open house does start at six. And I think it'd be nice, if the board is thinking of going to the budget thing at six thirty, if possible, just at least stop in. Um, and, you know.
Big appearance.
I'll be unavailable that day.
He's unavailable that day.
You're unavailable that day. Cookies and stuff.
What do you got?
Uh, tomorrow I'm attending the Mima quarterly regional conference, uh, region office in Agawol. And Wednesday, the fiber optic committee is gonna gather for the first time to organize the board.
Got nothing to report.
When do you think we're gonna have the next, sorry, when do you think we'll have the next executive session for?
Um, next Monday.
Next Monday, I think, so I'll plan on that after.
After we do.
Is this for both, you think? We're already done with.
We're done with, yeah.
Have we signed it yet?
No, no, I gave it to Lauren though, to give it, put everything in, then give it there, everybody to look at it, make sure it's all.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Well, you have to second, because they already made the motion.
I'm sorry, Brian, do you have anything you want to bring up?
Um, just a question related to the cable license agreement. Um, that's gonna expire soon, so, um, I reached out to, uh, Bill Solomon, who is the, uh, I think the town's former. Uh, attorney that works on cable license agreements, and he had suggested that he could show up at the next meeting on the eighteenth. And he would have a legal services agreement for the board to consider, as well as a short-term extension, that he will try to reach out to. Uh, charter to discuss. But it would also mean that the, the, the cable license agreement would be, would be technically expired for one day, it doesn't mean charter's gonna stop providing services, but. It would be the term, any, any terms of the contract, charter wouldn't.
Well, people would have no recourse or something, right, we got no, I, I'd like to, I saw your email before on that, I really would like to suggest. That we schedule a very short meeting on this Thursday and get this done while we're still covered.
This Thursday?
Yeah, I don't care if it's two in the afternoon, it's a half hour thing, Bill, uh, Mr. Solomon zooms in. And we just authorized him, I thought that part was already done.
I thought it was taken care of.
I did too, when you said he'd never gotten a contract, I mean, we said this.
We, we voted, actually, we voted on it twice, one time we voted to hire him and you asked to give a number of hours. And then we voted the next week. To say, to appoint him and Bob to do it.
Basically, Bob get her done, and, yeah, so.
Well, either way, we need to extend the, the contract.
Right, and that's why I'd like to do while the contract's still in effect. So is, since it turns out to be Tuesday, is Thursday or Friday?
Friday morning?
It can be, what's, we're both, we kind of, you know, they're, Craig, what's good for you?
Uh, if it's morning, you know, I can come in after school drop.
Either Thursday or Friday?
Thursday, they're both here, so.
So can you arrange it with him, Brian?
What'd you say, Thursday at like nine or something, Greg, or?
Eight thirty, nine o'clock, I, eight thirty's, yeah, eight thirty probably, when I can get here.
Yeah, my one concern would be if he could get charter to agree by then.
If he can't, then, you know, that's the moot point.
Right, I mean, I would definitely call Mr. Solomon tomorrow and say, look, the board's gonna be meeting this day to get it done, if you wanna call with them, no, because it sounds like he's got a pretty good relationship. Having represented so many towns.
I mean, it's a one word thing, we're gonna extend the contract or. We don't wanna go too long, you know, go too long, you know, a month or something, or six, I don't know, three months.
And just, just for the record.
Do we need a memo, I mean, what's, part of the thing was like a public meeting and stuff like that? No, but I'm saying it's part of the extension thing, so I think the minimum is gonna be at least three months, maybe.
Yeah, three months extension.
But I, I think just to the point of everything, charter never once reached out to us, nobody's heard anything about extension.
That's what I mean, that, you know, this whole thing expiring like. But now that we know about it, we have to go do a change again. Second?
Yeah, whatever, John will bring donuts.
What are we doing at Thursday morning, because I have to post tonight probably before I leave?
Yeah, let's, if you gotta post, then, how about Thursday at nine, then?
I posted Thursday for nine. Yeah, and if, you know, if we don't, if it doesn't happen, we'll just cancel it, that's all.
I'll call Bill tomorrow, yeah, and if he doesn't think he can get it, then. We'll do it on Monday.
Alright, very good.
Maybe those are the names that are up for reelection, Norm, Norm is up for assessors. Dave Demer's a new guy for planning.
So there's two spots.
So there's two spots, so you gotta.
You gotta figure out what the term is left on Jason.
I, I thought you guys had those, but it's a list of everyone there too.